Good evening, welcome to the Porridge Lakes Joint Occasional School District Meeting for the month of May. Mr. Wright, would you call the roll please? We're not doing that yet. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
Yes, sir.
And then we're going to do the Oath of Office and then we'll do a roll.
Yes, sir.
So if you'd all please rise and join me. The pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right now, I believe the oath of office is in order for our new member this evening.
Mr. Petrie, if you'd like to just stand with me here. So I'll read the oath and at the end of the oath, I'll ask you if you agree to it and your answer will be "I will." Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Porridge Lakes Career Center Summit County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and herein after to be enacted during your continuance instead of office and until your successor is elected and qualified? If so, please answer "I will."
I will.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome aboard. Should be some confetti dropping. Now, Mr. Wright, do you call the roll please?
Mr. Chinaki?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Fouser?
Here.
Mr. Hercules?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Mrs. McGraw?
Here.
Mr. Petrie?
Here.
Petrie?
Petrie.
Sorry. Uh, Mr. Jividen?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Any visitors' comments this evening? I don't believe there are any, so we'll write it to the Treasurers' Report and Recommendations.
Item number one is a recommendation to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 20th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Jividen. And thank you, Mr. Fouser.
Um, Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Abstain.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Abstain also.
Motion passes. Item number two is a recommendation to approve the financial reports, check register, bank reconciliation, and comparative financial report for the month of April 2023 as presented, subject to audit.
So, thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
Mr. Hercules.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number three is a recommendation to approve the amended five-year forecast and accompanying assumptions. The forecast contains actual financial information for fiscal years 2020 through 2022 and projected financial information for fiscal years 2023 through 2027.
So moved.
Second. I'll make a couple of quick comments. There really isn't much changing in the spring version of the forecast versus what we talked about in November. Um, we currently still have a state budget bill that isn't buttoned up. And so, uh, that includes a few items that could impact this forecast going forward. Those items appear to be positive versus what we have in the forecast right now. We potentially could have some positive impact from what happens in Columbus. Uh, but rather than include something that's not for sure just yet, um, there was really no reason to change those figures or those projections at this moment. Um, it's a balanced forecast, just like November's. Uh, the bottom line for the current year is very similar to what it was in November. A little bit of give and take here as far as like, um, our supplies and purchase service spending this year was a little stronger than initially anticipated, which is understandable given the inflation environment we are existing in. But on, that's the expense side. On the revenue side, we we've been, we have been realizing investment returns that have been very strong. Also, um, our real estate tax collections for the current year were also very strong. So all those things pretty much just balance each other out and we end up with a projection for the current year that's very similar to what it was in November.
Okay, so no fundamental changes?
No fundamental change, not yet.
Okay.
Uh, the version in October, November coming up will be the one with all the changes from the, um, from the state budget.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number four is a recommendation to approve the donation to the George Garmen Scholarship Fund for Stephanie Mahelik over $500 and donation to the Buddy Lloyd Scholarship from Sandra Ferguson in the amount of $500.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McGraw and Chinaki.
Uh, just a, a quick note here. Uh, we approve cash contributions through the board routinely. Um, I did want to say that, uh, the George Garmen Scholarship is related to the engineering program and the Buddy Lloyd Scholarship is related to the culinary program.
Okay.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. That concludes the Treasurers' Section.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I see that it's really nice outside and our four, uh, four youngsters in their last week and a half of school decided not to show up, but they are very excited to get the award. I do want to, uh, mention their names. Uh, Stone Musselman is a junior in our HVAC program from Coventry, Colin Bytko, junior fire academy from Green, Logan Dinger, uh, junior engineering robotics manufacturing uh, from Manchester, and Victoria Miller, um, also a junior from our pre-nursing program and from Springfield. Um, you know, the last month since we've been together, just a lot going on. And, you know, from signing day to our parade last night, our senior parade last night, which had an awesome turnout, uh, with students and families. But, uh, one thing I want to let the board know is how proud I am of our students and their attitudes and their behavior. And that's, that's a testament to the culture that's been created by the organization as a whole, starting, you know, at the top all the way down. Um, and I also want to thank, um, Ms. Tina Salee, who is not only our head disciplinarian, but also in charge of our positive behavior intervention and supports. And juggles those two quite well and actually plays them off of each other. And I believe it's a big part of the positive attitudes and the well-mannered, good behavior, uh, that we generally see every day. Um, and I wish I was mic'd up last night to hear some of the comments of our seniors because it's, it's, uh, it's pretty special, how much they appreciate being here and the opportunities that are presented to them. So anytime you have an opportunity to speak to any of those graduates or anyone currently that, you know, is enrolled in one of our programs, I, I highly recommend, um, talking to them because, uh, it's a joy. It was really nice to see, um, the talk, you know, amongst teachers today was students who, I guess you typically wouldn't think would show up, um, to the event itself to, uh, receive their career passports, um, are the ones that are all doctored up and, you know, coming in with their cars decorated and just smile ear to ear. So, uh, really proud of the school itself and the district as a whole and our students that are here. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'll be quick because it is so nice out. Um, I just wanted to let you know for adult education, um, there will be an adult education week throughout the state of Ohio before we meet again. It is from June 12th through June 16th. Um, you will probably see some things from Krista blasted out on social media. There is a very large campaign to bring awareness to the idea that it doesn't necessarily have to be a two or a four-year college, that Ohio's OTCs, of which we are one of 51, we exist for, um, a variety of reasons, but most importantly, to offer short-term certificates and a quicker way to get employed with a livable wage and real potential for a career. So that's what you'll probably be seeing and hearing in June. Uh, if you do see and hear that, please know that we are one of those, uh, and we do fall into that system. Next, uh, you will see a lot of adult ed on tonight. Uh, our handbook is coming out and I certainly do not hope or want or expect any of you to read that. Uh, it's a chore for me to read it every year, but I just wanted to let you know some major changes and you'll find that they're very reactive. And it's interesting to see the three big changes that we made. The last time at the board meeting, I mentioned to you that we were having quite a few FAFSA changes that would be coming up. So one of the changes that we made was to create an excused absence policy. Um, that is something that our other career centers have been told by the feds, um, that we need in order to make sure that we don't have to start paying back tuition if a student even misses one hour. So it's interesting. Uh, with financial aid, um, we, as a clock-hour school, let's say we have a class that's 600 hours. If we don't have an excused absence policy now, if a student misses 20 hours, that student can still successfully complete the program, but they have received financial aid for 600 hours. And so we would then owe them, owe the feds, 20 hours of that financial aid. We certainly don't want to be in that predicament, so we got an excused absence policy real quick. Uh, there's also a hazing policy. Obviously, if you've been watching the news in Ohio, we've been struck by several events. Um, obviously, those often happen at colleges or universities, but we are also moving to create a hazing policy just to be safe. And the last one is a vaccine policy. With COVID, um, that the lines become very blurred. Our practical nursing program, the clinical sites that we use often do require the COVID vaccine, and that has brought up some pretty gray issues. Uh, so we have a vaccine policy now that we don't expect anyone to have a vaccine, but that certain programs might, you might be limited as a student if you do not have certain vaccines. So those would be the big three that you would see in the student handbook. And again, very reactive to very current issues and trends. Finally, um, I love numbers, so I did the numbers again. We have a potential in adult ed for 288 students if we are fully enrolled each semester. Then we have an additional potential for, um, uh, in our second semester of another small cohort. But on May 9th, I took our numbers and we were at 49% capacity. Um, today, which is just nine days later, we are actually at 64% capacity, which is huge. Uh, when we go into the summer season, we expect to be pretty busy, but again, as we saw last year, and especially with the assistance of our enrollment specialists who can now solely focus on that, we've seen our numbers get higher and higher earlier and earlier, which is great news for us. I will also say that right now, our cosmetology programs are at 98 capacity and we're just in the middle of May. So we have two spots open for August and that is all. Um, our back hallway folks, HVAC, manufacturing, auto and welding, we're at 37% capacity. And I'm pleased to say that I really do hope that this is the first year where I can run the 600-hour manufacturing technologies program. Um, that's something I've wanted to get off the ground for a while. And we have, uh, three people enrolled as of today entering into this summer season, which is always really helpful. Uh, our culinary and dispatch, which I just kind of categorizes miscellaneous, they're at 18%. Our healthcare programs right now are at 63%. So we're really excited about all the things that could potentially be happening. And hopefully, uh, when I see you next, I'll have even more encouraging news. Thank you for all of your support.
Okay, before we get started on the agenda, I just have a, a couple of really important things to talk about. As you know, what's been on my plate, um, for quite some time is the proposal put forth for, um, accessing money to renovate our welding lab, add a dental assisting lab, turn our two locker bays into classrooms. And, um, one of those locker bays would not just be a classroom, it would become a phlebotomy lab, which would be our first senior-only program that we've had here. So we're excited about that. I kind of look at it as a way of those students who did not choose to come to PLCC as juniors, but as seniors find themselves not having a plan and have perhaps an affinity towards the medical field, that that would be a great opportunity for them. So we're looking forward to that. We're going to have that regardless of whether the proposal is funded or not. Um, as part of that proposal, we had to include what we would pay for, what we would get in-kind services for, and then what we were asking for from, from the, um, from the proposal. And one of the things, um, that I would like for us to consider, perhaps in June, the lower lecture hall where we used to have our board meetings. Um, if you had the privilege of sitting in that board meeting, it was very, very tight, very, very tight. And, and hence, we moved down here just so that we could have some flexibility, but the sound is, is terrible. Um, in addition, if we can renovate the lower lecture hall, it could become a training center, so we would no longer call it that, it would be a great place for us to do a lot of trainings, both with the community and our students, and to have a, a nice, um, board meeting. So as you leave tonight, and if you've not been in the lower lecture hall, please take a look. What they would do is very simple. It's just take that first level where we used to sit and raise the floor. And they have to raise a door. So it'd be a very minor renovation, um, probably about $100,000. I know that doesn't sound minor, but, um, it'd be about $100,000 renovation, but they would, we'd be able to utilize, um, that big space a lot more than we currently do, as well as have a nice board meeting. So we'll dive into the agenda now. Um, item number two are the adult education staff and student handbooks, and I'm recommending that you approve them.
Motion to approve. So. Mr. Petrie, please.
Second.
I think, uh, or Mr. Cohen.
Question on the vaccine policy. Is that something that's mandated by federal or state or both?
It's a suggestive policy, um, for us to have. And, um, you know, as we were experiencing COVID, and particularly, most of our practical nurse clinicals are in a nursing home. And they would not allow a, a person to go in unless they had been vaccinated. So if a person did not get vaccinated, there needed to be some sort of an alternative site, but that, that becomes very difficult. So it doesn't, um, I think, preclude a person from having a, you know, a feeling one way or the other. It's just, we're just upfront. There are some programs, if you're in, your, your opportunities will be limited if you're not vaccinated. And it's not just the COVID.
Oh, so that it covers other vaccines?
Right.
Okay.
Would they test them anyway?
I would imagine.
Because you, people get boosted, they come.
Sure, exactly.
So being tested is not the only way you could.
Yes, right. And each nursing home handles it just a little bit differently than others. But it's just kind of, um, in some ways a reactive, reactive to, you know, the pandemic. But yes, we're, you know, we're getting our policies in order to cover.
It's not, it's not us requiring anything.
No, we are not.
It's just making sure that they're aware that
Yes.
that could be a possibility.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Exactly.
If it's required, it would throw a different stone in the water.
Yeah. Anything? Mr. Wright?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number three, we have a resignation and a retirement, and I'm recommending that the board approve them.
So moved. Thank you, Mr. Hofer. Second. Thank you, Mr. Jividen. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number four is non-renewal.
I'm sorry. What's the, what was the teacher of retirement? What did she teach?
She taught CBE and she was a satellite school at Green. Item number four, non-renewals. Um, yearly, we non-renew adult education contracts if enrollment isn't where it needs to be, and quite often you will see those names in the future. Um, we have three high school one-year limited contracts. Two of them, Jenna Lewis and Julian Ollahan, um, filled in a year in a culinary arts program, and they knew it was a one-year limited contract. In addition, all supplemental contracts are non-renewed every year, and that's what you'll see there. It's recommended that the board approve the non-renewals of the contracts listed above.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fouser.
Mr. Wright?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number five, employment. Under contracted training, um, every year, we, we must employ a pharmacy advisor for a med tech program. Um, Jenna Cole has, has been our constant and is a wonderful advisor. Um, the second section are adult ed contracts. We have strong enrollment, as you heard Mrs. Trippney say, and this allows us to list these, the following staff there and through the next page. In addition, we have three support staff contracts to renew. High school one-year limited contracts to renew. That's it? That's the list?
That's it.
Aren't you glad I didn't read all the words? I am. It's recommended that the board approve the employment contracts listed above.
So moved. Thank you, Mr. Chinaki.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hofer.
Any additional comments or questions? Mr. Wright? Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number six, continuing contract. Melinda Stratos is one of our high school of cosmetology teachers, and she's worked hard to get to this point, and we're very proud of her. We're recommending that the board approve the continuing contract for her.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seven, supplemental contracts. Um, ODE requires that each district have an LPDC, and our plea agreement spells out how we do that. So the following people will be the LPDC, um, participants for the 23-24 school year, and I'm recommending that you approve their names.
So moved. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Second, and second, thank you, Mr. Petrie. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eight, Power for Schools Agreement. I know that Mr. Wright, um, previously sent you an email in regards to this, so I'm recommending approval of the renewal of the Master Electric Energy Sales Agreement between Porridge Lakes Career Center and Power for Schools Endorsed Electric Supplier, NG Resources LLC, effective 1/24 through 6/25.
Motion for that. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Second. Thank you, Mr. Chinaki. Questions or comments? Mr. Wright?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number, um, number nine, an MOU with Greenleaf Family Center. Um, we have an agreement with them to provide mental health services to any students, uh, for the 23-24 school year. It's no cost to the board. It's, it's something that we needed. We did previously have an agreement with another service, but not an MOU. And this really spells out what they will do and what we will do, um, for them, and we're looking forward to this opportunity for our students and families. So please approve.
Second. Thank you, Mr. McGraw. Thank you, Mr. Jividen. Mr. Wright?
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 10, as always, we have wonderful donations from our partners. Um, the first two, and the first one is plumbing and pipe fitting, and the second two are for welding. And the last one is, is a different one. Um, our government, government teacher had a connection at Chick-fil-A, and they gave him, um, $630 worth of gift cards to, um, encourage our students to do well on the government test. So, um, that's a wonderful opportunity.
That's interesting. All right. I like that.
So Chick-fil-A has been a good partner. It's recommended that the board approve the above-listed donations to be used.
So moved. Thank you, Mr. Hofer. Second. Mr. Chinaki. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 11, four policies. The first one is a first reading only. It's in regards to allowing advertising here. As we have sought some sponsorships for our welding bays and people placing their banners in there, we just wanted to have a process in place for that. So this is just a first reading for that. The second policy is a required revision for reporting child abuse and mandatory training, and I suspect that you have seen it on your board agendas in your home districts. I'm recommending that the board approve the policy update of GHG as listed above.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hofer.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
New business? Anything to discuss under new business, other than welcoming Mr. Petrie on board?
Thank you.
Do we know when the state's, I know it's a stupid question, do we have any inkling when we might think we might hear about it? About the money being involved for the project?
Well, first, the state budget has to be approved. They're going through the process. The cool thing about the proposal is we were given a rubric of what they were going to be asking for. And I believe we exceeded the mark to get the maximum points. So allegedly by June 30th.
Okay. Which is what the budget has to be.
Yeah.
Because it was in and then out, and then back in and changed, and back around, and so, right? Sometime in July.
Yes.
Gotcha. Yeah, exactly. No date on that. And is there a, I assume there will be some sort of restriction, but some sort of where you had to either have the projects under contract or is there like a time limit where you had to get that spent?
There will be. We were told that you had to present as shovel-ready.
Oh, okay.
So we are everything, we are ready to be shoveling.
Right.
I mean, we don't have all the intimate plans, you know, but we had the main plan.
And the architectural work.
Yeah, all of that, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, any new business, anyone else would like to bring up? Okay. Board members, formal. We'll start with Mr. Jividen. We'll start down with you today, how about that?
It's always nice to be here at this incredibly busy time of year. With the kids wrapping things up, it's always, everybody seems to be very optimistic about that. I just wish I did have a few drinks though, why? Other than that, it's all good.
Good luck to the retirees that are going. Adult ed, as always, the percentage is, what'd you say, on the one, 40-something, and now it's 62 or something? Yeah, that's great. I like the donation from Chick-fil-A next time I'm in the Montrose area. Stop in, see what's going on. And on the one, is there an LIV on that? Blackness image?
No, there isn't, we're not, no.
An NIL?
NIL.
NIL, you've got to live on this too.
Yeah.
You never know.
I guess. I guess we could check with it.
As long as school gets in on it too.
True.
Mr. Chanacki?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Great to hear the adult education numbers obviously increasing. Just wanted to share a couple of brief interactions that I've had yesterday. A former PLCC Student of the Month. In 2023, was an umpire for my son's baseball game. So that was super, super cool to see. Just interacted with him briefly, and just an upstanding gentleman. And really, really, it was just great to see because I had talked to him on my tour here and saw him there, and I'm like, hey, you know, so that was cool to see. And then another interaction today, I was at a local restaurant, and I had my really nice quarter zip on. And the worker across from me said, you're on the PLCC board? I said, I am. She said, thank you so much for what you all do and what your program means. Her daughter was at Manchester and was, came here for the cosmetology program, and it turned her career trajectory upside, you know, upright.
Sure.
And she was just, she wanted to extend a thank you to all of you for all that you do and how much that meant. And I was like, whoa, I'm just, you know, I was just getting some, you know, some lunch. I didn't expect to hear that. So that was really, really neat. And I think it just extends to the impact that we touch and the folks in this room touch and impact every single day, 365 days a year. So that was really neat to hear and just thank you all, so that's all I have.
So the quarter zips are paying off on a marketing side too, right? I mean, that's awesome. You give Mr. Chanacki maybe a magnetic thing for his car, I think.
We'll get it wrapped.
I just wanted to thank the teachers and the staff here for providing such a great environment for our kids. I have a bunch of, my son's a sophomore, and so his fellow sophomores are going to be here next year. And I've had a chance to talk to some parents. And also, a graduating senior, she's going to go to design in Bowling Green. And I got a chance to talk to her parents, and she was like, I said to her mom, you know, being a designer, being a creative person, there's, I'm living proof that you can be this your whole life. You're not just going to be, you know, making art, you can be a whole job. And so I talked with them for a while, and they said that they were just super proud of their daughter and super proud of the, you know, the offer that you had here. So thank you so much just for your continuing thoughtfulness about what they need at this time and also for our adult education, because otherwise, you know, I think there would be a lot of people kind of floundering around without any direction. And the idea of offering shorter timeframes to get some type of certification to get jobs right away is really thoughtful, and I'm thankful that you guys are doing that.
Mr. Cohen?
Oh. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Switching around.
You did. Too many curveballs. Just wanted to welcome Mr. Petrie to the board. I think he'll find this a pretty collegial place. And PLCC is a really unique kind of diamond in the rough that I don't think many people realize is here. And it's just a real special place. Congratulations to Mrs. Redman and the staff and the teachers for another fantastic year. This is year four?
This is year five for me.
This is year five, wow.
Wow.
I can't believe how fast the time has gone. And we're very fortunate to have you. And the PLCC has absolutely flourished under your leadership, and it has just, it's taken off, and the sky's the limit. And looking forward to many more years under your direction. Thank you.
Mr. Petrie?
I'd just like to thank everybody for the warm welcome. The quarter zip is a nice touch. Appreciate that. I come with a long history in education, and I taught career ed in another district and supervised career ed programs. So hopefully, I can offer some welcome contributions to what goes on here. So thank you for including me and look forward to this.
Mr. Hercules?
Well, I know we don't have any of them here tonight, but I'd like to congratulate all the graduates. The next couple of weeks, I imagine they'll all be graduated from all our anchor schools as well as all the graduates from our anchor schools. And welcome Mr. Petrie to the board.
Thank you.
My turn, Mr. Hofer?
You have to wait for Bob to call on you.
That was a good call. Last night, we had the senior parade. I want to thank the teachers and the staff for really putting on a wonderful show. The kids were excited, a lot of them had smiles. You could tell a few of them are a little scared because they're being launched out into a new world, you know, so at 18. And we've adjusted to it, and they haven't adjusted to it yet. So that was a nice, nice time last night. I previously sent you a update for the state budget. I took snapshots of that. On the left side, when you see that, that's the governor's proposed budget. The right side is as it has passed the State House, and the added amendments to that. Some of those, teachers' pay goes up to $40,000 from a $30,000 base. So wherever you find your school districts at, that's as it stands now. There's winners and losers. The federal poverty rate is still at 450%. So there's a lot of mix at that that allows, that's going to allow a lot of people to start moving around. There's an interesting piece to that. I'm not so sure I agree with the 450%. Cup Patterson is supposed to be fully funded. Chris, you'll get an update that they've moved the 2018 base into 2022 and fund that through 2024. So there should be an update. We're working, they're working on an update for 2024 to increase that. So career tech actually makes out very well per student basis on that. It goes, I think it went from 7,900 to 9,100 as it stands. So as that goes to the Senate side where it is now, it'd be interesting to look, to see that. They just sent me another link update, so look, in the next couple of weeks, I'll send you another update. I don't know why it got out of sync, but there's a lot happening at the State House. So sharpen your pencils and paper and send them a note. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dave. Appreciate that update. You know, just a couple of things, obviously, congratulations to our seniors and the staff for another, you know, winding down to another great year. Adult ed always just amazes me. It truly does, from where it had been to where it's, you know, on its trajectory now. And, you know, the comments from Mr. Chanacki and Mrs. McGraw, from, you know, the two students that were out there, what a great thing, and the ones that are looking forward to coming. I think it shows that the direction that the leadership is taking us is the right direction and, you know, building a lot of great momentum. One of the things that I've noticed as well, you know, we see the donations coming in from different places for scholarships and also from the manufacturing. And you see the repeat donations. Typically, manufacturers and companies that are out there making money don't continue to fund things if they're not doing things well. And I think that's a huge reflection of what we're seeing from the business community that's reflecting here. We always talk about the culture of CTE, we're, you know, trying to change that. I think we're still, we're making progress. Just speaking from green only, I don't know if it's the other schools that experience this as well, but we're seeing some of our groups that provide scholarships also making a trade scholarship as well coming into that. I don't think, you know, I truly don't recall seeing that in the years that I've been there. It's mostly, you know, mostly academic scholarship-based, that kind of thing. Not, that's not, but they're also, you know, there's certainly an emphasis now in bringing that also back into the home schools and recognizing the students here in front of their peers, which I think is, which is an incredible, incredible thing that's going on as well. And I think that, I really do think it's, you all have to thank for that, your vision and not being afraid to take that step to, maybe on a little bit of a, in a little bit of the unknown, but, you know, taking the direction that you're seeing and making a great choice. So we certainly appreciate that. CTE is obviously, you know, big in the state budget now, you know, especially with this program. And I think it's just, I think it's just scratching the surface. I think they're really going to make this push, and people are going to realize that, you know, well, like you said, living wage and a career in the stuff that's happening right here. So it's an interesting time. We do have a need for executive session this evening. Higher Vice Code 121, 22. And we do not anticipate any action to take place afterwards. So do I have a motion to move into executive session at this time?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hercules. Thank you, Mr. Chanacki.
Mr. Wright?
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fouser?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw? Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
It is 6:43 PM. All right, thank you.